And first item would be roll call.
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Here.
Chairman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Widman.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Marsh is absent. Alderman Looby.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Seven present, one absent. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Yeah, thank you. Second item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the September 7th, 2010 committee meeting. Is there any correction to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're moving too fast. Third item on the agenda.
(laughing).
Got to spread this out, would be a report on historic designation.
(inaudible).
Well, I'll come up with some other things. Report on the historic designation of interiors. And, well, Megan, I thought we were going to get Kathy doing this.
I think the agenda says Kathy will be presenting, but on behalf of Kathy, I'm here.[87.61][87.61](laughing). Thank you, Chairman Novit. Earlier this year, the council reviewed several items relating to Elloa Farm, including the special use permit, the master plan, as well as the designation of the buildings and grounds as a local landmark. At that time, the Historic Preservation Commission had asked that the city council consider landmarking the interior of the buildings as part of the preservation measures for the building. The purpose of tonight's presentation is really to provide some background on the existing preservation ordinance with a focus on the interior designation. In response to the Historic Preservation Commission's request, the question before the council tonight is whether or not to direct staff to prepare a nomination for the interior of some specific spaces in Elloa Farm. The city council adopted the preservation ordinance in 1998. The intent of the ordinance is really to preserve the historic character of Lake Forest. It establishes the Historic Preservation Commission, which has given the authority to review and issue certificates of appropriateness for modifications to historic structures. In 2009, the city council adopted a provision for designation of interior landmarks. This, to date, there have been no nominations brought forward to the city council, but this provision does broaden the protection of historic structures in Lake Forest. Just to provide some background, the ordinance provides a lengthy definition, but I wanted to highlight the flexibility that the ordinance provides to allow specific areas of interiors to be nominated, so you don't necessarily have to nominate the entire inside, but particular elements of an interior, such as materials, specific architectural detailing, and the like. Similar to the criteria for exterior nominations, interior landmarks need to meet one or more of the criteria noted in the ordinance. They really speak to exemplification of architectural types, association with noted architects, innovative design techniques, and association with people or events relevant to the history of Lake Forest. With respect to process, the submittal of a nomination for an interior space can be offered to the commission by an owner, a member of the commission, simple majority of the council, as well as a member of a local or federal preservation organization. Since the city owns the Elloa Farm buildings, the city council can direct staff to prepare a nomination. Once a nomination is submitted, it would be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission, and then a recommendation would be forwarded to the city council for final With respect to Elloa Farm, four areas have been presented on a preliminary basis as worthy of continued preservation. As you're aware, Elloa Farm has gone through significant restoration and renovation, and throughout that process, these areas in particular have retained a lot of the historic character as it existed back in the early 1900s. I can go into specific detail now, or if you have questions, I can go through them. But particularly, it's the hay barn, the tack room in the hallway, the curved ceiling of the cow stables, and the horse stalls. Just some considerations for the council with respect to local designation. Local interior designation does allow the preservation of important historic features. As I mentioned before, there is flexibility in the ordinance. Nominations can be specific, they should be clear, and provide some long-term protection of the interior spaces. A review process would be required for the elements that are part of the ordinance. The Historic Preservation Commission would be required to review modification to those elements and issue a certificate of appropriateness. Really, given that the city has already taken some steps to preserve these spaces, interior nomination of the interior would continue that example for the community, and it would really protect the spaces for the long term. So right now, the council really has two directions that it can take. You can maintain the status quo and not direct that the interiors be nominated as local landmarks, or you can direct staff to prepare a nomination for the interior spaces listed on the screen. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
The first question is, I think the first building we should do is right here, inside the council chamber for that. And I don't know why we haven't done this one. This one, we renovated and spent a lot of money to bring it into historic shape as it was before with a nice addition on it. So my recommendation would be to do our own city hall, or council chamber is the first one, and then from there go and do Elloa, and you have Gordon and some of these other places. Gordon probably the front hallway to the school. I don't think the classrooms are nice, but again, we want to be sure to keep the building so that it's usable, and I think you have to be careful of that, that changes can, or limiting, can make it obsolete in the future. And I'm sure we have many more than that, that we could prepare for that. But I would certainly move that this room itself be the first one on the list, just to say this is, we care about it, and we work out of this room right here.
If we had designated this room 20 years ago, would we have been able to make the improvements we did?
Yes.
Is this binding on future city councils?
Ah, yes, it will be. If you designate it, we'd have to go through a process to undesign it if we choose.
But they could just take a vote and do it.
Yeah, it's ultimately, I mean, it's all within their votes, but through a process.
So it's pretty symbolic and nothing more. I mean, I completely...
I believe that is a rhetorical question.[520.12][520.12](laughing).
Well, no, I'm asking the question. I mean, I completely understand why we put this in place, and I think it's terrific for private owners. Other than maybe the example and the symbolic benefit of doing it, I don't really know what us saying something is historic does, because it can, you know, if a future city council decided that they wanted to take this room, because we go to 12 aldermen, and they wanted to change it around, they could just vote to do that. Now, whether there was something in place or not in place, they could still do it.
They ultimately could after a process. I think the one thing that I would underscore is that, as we've seen, processes often have an impact on outcomes, and as a result, I think it might be a little bit understated to say that we can simply change it if we choose.
I'll tell you, I think we should undertake one of these buildings, and I think you're prepared for Elloa, because I think as a former member of HPC, I think it would be awkward and difficult to help somebody through the process if we hadn't been through it yet. I mean, I just think that just getting through it once and making sure that we can get through it, when somebody does do it, a private property designation of an interior space, well, no, it would be awkward to be so new at something that we had no experience when it had a private effect.
I always worry about binding future city councils.
If we designate the interior of this room as a historic space, and we are currently in this space, does that mean we get to stay here?[640.16][640.16](laughing).
Do you want to?[642.16][642.16](laughing).
We could designate the aldermen as historic.
Well, they keep feeding us.[653.82][653.82](laughing).
No, as far as direction, I tend to agree. If we're going to explore this, you know, possibly Elloa, city council chambers might give some direction. You know, and again, maybe we're showing future city councils structures that we consider to be sensitive, or ones that we consider to be worthy of preservation, and maybe that'll give them some direction in the future. Yeah, again, I think it's non-binding, as we've indicated, it's largely symbolic, but maybe that's something that's important to carry on to future generations in the city.
This isn't going to be something for a private home unless they particularly, or private property unless they particularly ask for it.
The owner has to ask for it.
For the interior, the owner.
They're the only one you can do it.
And what advantage do they get from it?
The interior of a private residence does require the owner to support the nomination.
Do they get a tax break or something like that?
It certainly could open opportunities for them on the state level for financial...
I mean, the exterior, they get a tax break.
They do. I'm not sure what the financial incentives are for interior, but it does, it just offers a level of protection for significant spaces for private residents that aren't always visited by the public. For public institutions like this, it does provide protection for spaces that are enjoyed by the public, and could be now and in the future.
Unless there's a benefit, I certainly don't see any homeowners coming in and saying, "I want to..."
You'd be surprised how many people really take pride in the fact that they've restored something from 1920.
Right.
And they never want it changed. And they're willing to sell the house encumbered. I mean, it was a landmark status.
But what will the person buying it be willing to pay with it encumbered?
Less.
That's the question. A lot, yeah.
I think the more interesting row that this might take would be if Lake Forest College or other educational institutions asked us to give this blessing on some of their interior spaces, let's go back a couple of years and think about the Barra Chapel, and if that had been designated then, that course of events might have been significantly different.
That's exactly true.
And so I think that that is really maybe where the real, where this thing is really going to have more significant play rather than this property or individual homes.
And I think, you know, it does help in the situation where you have a city property, and someone from the community or a group from the community has done a lot to help you return that to its roots. I mean, it's a way of sort of saying to them, this meant, you know...
Correct. Reinforcement.
It reinforces that this was a great gesture, and that we want to, you know, it's not going to be something that gets replaced 20 years later.
Also, with Barra, Tabor was a designated historic building. That's why the HPC couldn't give a certificate of appropriateness for demolition. And the city council at that point, with that designation, had the right to authorize the demolition, as I would imagine they would with an interior designation as well, unless I'm wrong, because it was a, it's an historic contributing building in a historic district. They had the same protections as the designation of the interior.
But it was only the exterior that was protected, and it was because the interior was what was really at the heart of the dispute, which wasn't protected, which is why, you know, I think we ended up in part doing what we did. But as I said, if both the exterior and the interior had been protected, different story perhaps. Anyways, that's your old news.
And at this point, is there any further discussion, Harry?
You know, in terms of the four spaces here that we're talking about doing this for, you know, we are, while it can be revoked, you know, we are binding people, and we need to make sure that that's, you know, we're absolutely comfortable doing that, right? Because if we get in a situation where, you know, not this property, but another property runs into trouble, you know, the economics of today are a good example of, we want to make sure we don't bind ourselves too much.
Right. I think that's a very good point, and I, maybe if I'm hearing a consensus of the council, it's sort of, let's move forward, let's set an example for the community, much like we did with Lead on our municipal service building, as we said that was the right thing to do, and we'll take the lead on that. Maybe what I might suggest, if there's some strong feeling on the council to do the council chambers, that we pick one of the spaces at Elloa and this space, we go through the process, and then we can always add to it in the future, at least we'll test it out and make sure everything is going okay.
I think that might be a good way to do it. I mean, you know, again, I think Elloa, we've done unbelievable things on, and I certainly, you know, want to recognize that.
Right.
And, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that we don't get in a situation where every, you know, once we do this, the snow, you know, I think we will get probably recommendations to start preserving a lot of different city-owned buildings.
Right.
And some of those are probably good recommendations, and some of those, I think we just have to be careful that we don't, you know, bind the future city council too much.
Right. Well, and you also, I think, once the council takes the first step, I think you'll find the Preservation Foundation will encourage its membership to designate certain spaces, and Megan can correct me if I'm wrong, but it might even go to, like, the rotunda in the library.
In the library.
You know, it could be that kind of specific element.
Well...
So I think that's one of the things that I think we'll just have to start, light the fire and see where it goes. But I want to do it cautiously, so everybody knows exactly what this means, and we've worked out the bugs before we start having private residents come before a council.
Are the, is the exterior of Elloa Farms landmark?
We did that recently. Was it about six months, a year ago?
I mean, how do you, if we're talking about, you know, a cove roof, you can't change it unless you tear down the building or tear down the roof from the outside, and that's already protected. This is pretty rustic there. This is very developed here. I don't know if we want to throw the city council chamber in with a cow stable or horse stalls, other than the unconscious humor of joining us with it. So I would say, let's just do this.
Which residency, yes.[1101.13][1101.13](laughing).
Well, the roof structure would be protected as an element that would have to be repaired, not replaced or covered. There'd be rules like that around it. I mean, it wouldn't be that you'd take the roof off. It's this...
Well, I just, I would say, let's do one or the other first. Let's not lump us in with Elloa or Elloa in with us.
Do you have any strong feelings, Megan?
If I understand correctly, they would actually be two separate projects.
The council chamber would be one...
Correct.
...project that was brought before the commission as a designation for an interior space, and Elloa Farm with the areas directed by the council would then come as a separate item. If there's an order to that, and the city council wishes that the chambers be done first, we can certainly work to prepare something like that. But we'd also like some direction with respect to Elloa, because there has been so much work done out there. I think, in particular, the hay barn would probably be the most important interior space, and that's been preserved from the beginning, or identified as an area to be preserved.
Is this something that the Elloa Foundation is, would very much like to happen?
I don't know if they have, who have you talked with?
I have had conversations with them, and they are supportive of...
Is this something being driven more by staff in the city, or is it something being more driven by others?
No, I would say that, first and foremost, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the staff is picking up on a conversation that has been out there for a while when we had the whole Barra discussion and so forth, and we recognize that this was a gap in our preservation ordinance. And we've had a lot of conversation with Preservation Foundation members over the year. So I think this is just a natural progression of our preservation ordinances.
Right.
But I certainly think that the Foundation is very interested in seeing further historic designation aspects out at Elloa Farm.
And if I could add, specific to Elloa Farm, when the Historic Preservation Commission was looking at the exterior nomination, they specifically asked that the council consider the interior as well. So that's one of the driving forces behind bringing this before you, is to kind of tie up some of those loose ends and bring this, and ask you the question.
I'm looking for two motions, or one. Is that your point? Make a motion to do this one, and then...
Separate motion.
Separate motion?
Separate motion to do that one, yeah.
I mean, I think this one is easier to do.
That's why I thought this would be a good start, because we're right here.
I think this one's easier to do. Having said that, this is where more of the work has been done, and I certainly don't want to offend anyone or any group if we've gone that route by sort of saying, "Oh, we like this idea, we're going to do this first." So I guess I'm looking for some help from staff if there's any sensitivity on that, and if so, then I think we should go ahead and do the hay barn first.
Yeah. They asked first, so...
Well, did they ask, or did it come from the staff, looking for a structure to put this together, a program, and that one was a good one to do?
But either way, I think that's a good motive.
Didn't think about this one. I just think, saying this is our home here at city hall, so we just approve this one and put this one number one, that we're right here, and at the same time, you can be preparing the other one. I'm all for that. I have no problem with it.
And this request came directly from the Historic Preservation Commission, as one of the city boards asking the city council, who's the owner of the building...
They never thought of the council chambers, or the rotunda in the library. I mean, there's another prime example of a historic area. It's beautiful, and we've spent a lot of money in it over the years, we're just not recently spending any money. I mean, this, when we redid this, we spent millions of dollars here, too. I get it.
When I think with Elloa, since it's newly renovated, you know, things are very pristine and just...
This isn't?
Well, yes, it is. But the energy is fresh, I guess, is my point.
I have no problem doing Elloa first, I just thought...
She's saying you're stale.
These chairs could be real...
Why don't we do two motions, one for the hay barn and one for the chambers, and direct staff to move forward on putting nominations on both?
Well, let's see which motion's going to come first. Does anyone have a motion?
I'll make the motion for the, for the two projects for the interior historic preservation.
I thought we were doing this...
No, no, I said two motions, two motions.
So which is first?
Oh, the first one we'll put for Elloa, that's fine.
I'll second the one for Elloa.
And the second one is for the city council chambers.
Okay. Can we do this as two separate motions, or...
There's a motion on the floor with a promise for a second.
Okay. All those in favor of allowing Elloa to be the first subject?
The Elloa hay barn, right?
The hay barn.
Elloa hay barn. Vote, well, would this be a roll call, or...
Voice vote would be fine.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Second motion?
The second motion is for the city council chambers.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Meg.
Would have been a problem if it died for the lack of a second.[1437.83][1437.83](laughing).
You never know. Bob?
Well, Alderman Novit, while we're on this topic of historic preservation, I might ask Alderman Widman to just talk briefly about the discussion that took place at Barra the other evening regarding the building and the preservation of historic structures and so forth.
Right. Well, as you may recall, I think it was in June, the city council created an ad hoc Barra committee to meet with Harris Bank, who's the current owner of the property. This arose out of actually Harris's request. They wanted to meet with us and talk about the future of the project. There originally, it was thought there'd be a very large committee from the city, but we pared that down to only five. We had our first meeting, I think it was about 10 days ago or so, something like that, and it was very productive. We did talk a lot about Old Main, of course, and other aspects of the project, and we asked the bank to take it back and think about what we said, and we'll have another meeting with them. So that worked out well. But preparatory to the meeting, we sent to Harris Bank a copy of our ordinance governing distressed properties, and we talked about that, because, of course, we all know, Barra has been sitting there vacant for a long time, and there has been some decline in the property in terms of its condition, and we can figure that that is going to continue. The bank has taken steps to monitor the property and to, you know, make sure that it, let's say, doesn't decline too rapidly, too much. But arising out of that was this topic for tonight's discussion, which is whether, on properties like that, larger properties, or all the way down to regular homes and things in between, we should tighten and strengthen the maintenance requirements upon everybody, any owner of property in the city. Harris Bank is in a little bit of a tough situation, because they just took over the property, and now they have inherited something that somebody else had for a while, so we have a nuanced question of whether they, as a new owner, should be responsible for whatever decline there was before they actually took over, but that's sort of a little piece of the puzzle. But the big question is, should we strengthen and enact some sort of ordinance that requires owners to maintain their property? One of the motivators behind this is that some owners may, looking toward a request for demolition later, by intent, or let's say neglect, allow the property, their own, their property to decline, and then basically come to the HPC or the BRB and say, "Well, this has declined to such extent that, you know, demolition is really the only alternative." There are obvious equities involved in that, because personally, I don't think anybody should be permitted to fail to do something, and then take advantage of their own failure and get a benefit from that. But that's just my own personal view. Anyway, so this is a topic that's up for council further discussion. It can impact a lot of different properties and a lot of different property types and a lot of different owners in the city, but it is something that I think we need to take a look at. It gets a little compounded now, and it's tougher economic times, because people may have more of an economic reason for not taking the next step to maintain their property, but that is something that we'll just have to try to discuss and hash out. The thought was to, because it originated with Barra and Barra's historic property, to send this topic to the HPC for an initial swing, and have the presentation made to them, and see what wisdom they can put on it, and then have it come back to us.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea, because should a house get into such decline that it would need to be torn down, it's probably open for teenagers and problems like that, and animals living in it, I mean, it would be, by the time it can't be recovered, it's been a, it'll be an eyesore and a safety issue for a lot of people. So I think some action is, would be needed, especially, even in Chicago, the city can board up a house and charge you, and we don't have such a thing here, so, not that we want boarded up homes, but I think some level of standard, some standard for keeping the house up is a fantastic idea, and I think HPC's a great place to send it.
Our current ordinance requires them to keep their lawns mowed, whether you're in it or it's vacant. That's a good start. But I mean, where do we go from here? And is this just for vacant properties, or properties with people living in them who can't afford or don't care about maintaining it? At some point, it becomes a little intrusive.
That's why HPC would be charged with coming up with it. I agree. I agree with it.
Yeah, and I guess whatever they would come up with could possibly be a template for nonhistoric properties also, but they would add a finer point to it, and then we could see whether we want to extend that to nonhistoric properties.
And this is a tangent, and that seems to be what I go on, but as far as the Barra property and a lot of other properties that are in disuse in the community, possibly the city does have an ordinance that requires the properties to be secured adequately, but the Barra property at this point is certainly lacking in fenced-off area, the fences being maintained, security. And, you know, again, we want to preserve the structure, but we do want to preserve the safety of people in the community, and I think Barra is dangerously getting to the level of just being a free and open area. And I'd encourage at least something be done, strengthen to require these buildings to be locked, secured, so they don't present a danger to our children. It's something that should be explored if it isn't in ordinance already. Walking past with the dogs, the fences at Barra are in a horrible state of disrepair, and here certainly has a money, a minimal amount of money to secure that property. Just a thought, and a minimal thought. Any other discussion as far as the Barra property?
So, is this for action now, or is that just for?
It would be appropriate to have a formal motion to send it off to the HPC and get your voice vote on that. That way, it will be, you know, a clear direction for the HPC to take up the task.
I'll make that motion directed at the HPC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, it would be the, part of the agenda for any other issues that might exist, or potentially, I guess, if we have other subjects from the council meeting that we might want to discuss briefly, run a narrow timeframe.
There's only really one item on the agenda, but I know that Ramesh is dying to come and speak to you if you have any questions. This came out of the Public Works Committee and recommendation to move forward with a engineering study for the Settlers Square, Green Everett Telegraph, I'm sorry, Everett-Walk Egan intersection there. I don't know if you had any specific questions.
We only have five minutes. Do we want to do this now?
It's up to you. How many questions do you have?
Well-
We spent a lot of time with it before going over it on the, widening the intersections with turn lanes, and so, this is pretty basic. It's approval of the contract for the basic engineering for the project, to really get some idea of what the actual scope is, rather than just, you know, preliminary.
So, I think Ramesh is kind of charging the stand at this point.
Do we really want to start the council meeting late?
If you need five minutes, we can end now.
Yeah, might be.
We still got to take public comment.
Any public comment here?
Yeah. Why don't we hold off until the council meeting? But at least Ramesh is ready. For the sake of, well, we're set to go, but item five on the agenda would be opportunity for public comment on issues that were subject of the committee of the hall. And are there any members of the public who wish to address council? There being none, and asking, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Committee of the hall meeting for October 4th is closed. And we'll be back for council in about five minutes.